And welcome to our last school committee meeting of 2018. I would like to call to order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for December 17th, 2018. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. DeCantor is absent.
Both Mr. DeCantor and...
Mr. DeCantor's walking in.
DeCantor is here.
Mr. Hochheiser is going to be a little bit late.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Menon?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Present.
Mr. Hochheiser will be from Mr. Riddick.
Here.
And Mrs. Calhoun.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Will we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. We have our first, or our only, I keep saying our first, because we used to have two. Our public comment, if anybody would like to communicate anything to the school committee, we would ask you to come up to the microphone. If you could give your address to Mrs. Kennedy so that we can get it for the minutes and speak, you know, two minutes or so, that would be really, really helpful. Is anybody interested in sharing anything with us in your public comment?
Hi, hello. My name's Rachel Forrest Haye. I live 25A Johnson Street in Newburyport. I have an eighth grade and a sixth grade at the NOC School. I just want to thank everybody for working hard on the school calendar, and I want to just make a comment about the school calendar for next year. I think the Friday half-days of this year that we've just experienced has been really excellent, really helped me to organize my working week, knowing that I don't have to break it up on a Thursday with a half-day, and a Friday half-day makes much more logical sense for my personal home calendar. And in an ideal world, a start after Labor Day would be also ideal for me, especially as Labor Day this coming September is relatively early in the month, you know, it's the second, so it makes sense for me to start after Labor Day. Obviously, sometimes the calendar for Labor Day is more like the fifth or the sixth, so then maybe, you know, look again at those years where you're talking, starting on the seventh potentially in the future. But next year, it's the second, so a start after Labor Day for me would be ideal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Michelle Petrowski. I'm at 5 Bartlett Drive in Newburyport. I have two sons, eighth grade and fifth grade, and my eighth grader actually remembers the pre-Labor Day, or the post-Labor Day start, and it was frankly luxurious. I wanted to, you know, I know a lot of the argument against the pre-Labor Day versus post-Labor Day is the later end in June, the quality of the education goes down, which I, you know, I can agree with to a point, but I also feel that these three days in August, the quality is not ideal in that. It's hot out, kids want to be at the beach, they want to be at pools, they don't want to be at school yet. I think that that's something to consider. I feel that if some simple adjustments, maybe moving some of these professional development days to those August days would free up the end of the year a little bit more. I don't see a reason to have the election day, staff day, as one of those days anymore. I remember when the Brezner hand was here and we voted here, that made perfect sense, and I 100% supported that, but I don't anymore. I think that having a full school week only once in the entire month of November is not quality, especially as our kid, my kids are getting older. That's the meat of that trimester, and I feel that they really need to buckle down in that timeframe, and they should be outside when it's nice out. So, thank you for your hard work, and I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Any additional comments?
Hi, happy holidays. Alex Koyer to Lancy Court, Newburyport. So, I'm here by way of a little bit of history in the event that Superintendent Gallagher doesn't, hasn't had the backstory. So, three superintendents ago, we, they established the Thursday half-days. Two superintendents ago, myself and another parent went to Dr. Kerbel and inquired about changing the half-days to a Friday. Thursdays, you know, as others have attested to, was difficult for working parents, it broke up the week. Many of us were taking Thursdays and Fridays to go away on a weekend. So, Dr. Kerbel did a survey of the parents, and 65% of the parents were interested in having half-days on Friday. It came before the school committee, the school committee voted it in, and then they voted it out. And so, here we are, you know, we had, it was probably four more years, so we got it, and I think it's been great. I think if you talk to the school nurses, there was a lot of stress associated with the Thursday half-days for kids in the middle school, because if they didn't have a plan, you know, they were talking about it, and then on Friday, they were talking about it, what didn't you do? And it's easier for the kids on Fridays to leave and not have to worry about that, because they can go on the weekend, and then by the time Monday comes along, they forget. And I feel like, and it, because of all the mandates that you guys are forced to deal with and implement in the schools by no fault of your own, so many things are getting taken away from the kids, and recess, and I think that to continue to take things away from us, and again, not no fault of your own, without giving things back, which we can't because we're budget-strapped and what have you, and your hands are tied, I get it. So, the things that you do have control over to not take away from us, to keep the parents, you know, the majority of parents who want this, and I know there's a bigger picture about the absences and that kind of thing, but again, just try to keep in mind the continual taking away from the school experience for the families and the kids when you're talking about these decisions going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments?
Hello. Amy Warshall. I live at 47 Plummer Ave., and I have a daughter in the fourth grade. So, I spoke a couple of weeks ago about the calendar, and I had a suggestion for the post-Labor Day start, and that would make the projected last day the same as the pre-Labor Day start, and that would be to move the professional development days to the week before Labor Day, as well as start on Tuesday rather than Wednesday. So, I looked at calendars from other school districts that start after Labor Day, and that's what they do. They have their professional development days the week prior. So, you know, we do have 10 early release days, and I was like, well, I guess those are professional development days, so I looked it up, just to be sure, and sure enough, they are. So, we have 10 of those spread out throughout the year, and I know they're not a full day. They start early enough, though. They start, what, 10:30, 11:30, depending on what grade your kid is in. So, I'd argue that it's not necessary to scatter them through the year. We don't collaborate. I've heard, well, we collaborate with other school districts. I don't think that's the case. Again, and I, why wouldn't we move it? You know, you have the summer, the teachers haven't been teaching for the whole summer. It just, to me, would seem to make sense to reconvene the week before, collaborate, get ready for the school year. And to Michelle's point, the week prior, as a mother of a kid in the school system, really not much is done. They're not ready to go back to school. We have a short summer. I don't know why we drag this out, and I understand that the, you know, in June, it's not very productive, but then again, we don't have to push it out. I don't know why that option is so unattractive. I don't, there's an easy solution. Again, start on Tuesday, like most of the other school districts do that have the post-Labor Day start, and move the professional development days. And again, there are 10 of them, so I'd like that to be considered. I saw the calendars. I don't know why that, I don't think I'm reinventing the wheel, so that is something I'm strongly in support of, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Hearing none. Do we have any warrants, Mr. Cole?
Yes, we have three warrants. I move that the following named bills and payrolls of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $1,244.03 be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $33,633.07 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
In the last warrant, I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $426,886.08 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You noted Mr. Hochheiser is absent from those votes. We have a set of minutes of our December 3rd meeting. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any changes? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes again unanimously. This is a real fun part of the meeting, and I'm going to turn it over to Sean to have all the fun.
Great. Thank you very much. This is the part of our meeting where we get to recognize students and staff. So, we have some people who are going to be recognized tonight, but before we get into our student-staff recognition, we'd like to formally recognize and welcome back Officer Megan Tierney. Officer Tierney started back in the school system last week. As part of my entry plan since the summer, all the way till now, every, when we talk about school safety and getting to understand this community, Officer Tierney's name has been brought up. So, by the time I got to meet her, she was legendary in my mind. So, I couldn't wait to meet Officer Tierney, and what was even greater is, we did a great positive workshop at the NOC where Ed Garrity came in and really was speaking for the students about resiliency, about positive attitudes, and Officer Tierney came into one of those assemblies, and as soon as she walked in, the entire class gave her a standing ovation. So, that's the impact that Officer Tierney has on this community, and it's a pleasure, not only to meet her, but it's going to be a pleasure to work with her closely throughout this year, and we just wanted to formally welcome you back here.
Well, thank you so much for having me back. I'm very happy to be here. I'm enthused by some of the new faces and also a lot of the old faces. It's been a pleasure, the last three days, getting back into things. I'm busy again, which is always where I like to be. I did want to specifically point out that you do have some amazing leaders in this community, particularly shaping our young people, and it's not only our administrators, because they're wonderful and they do an amazing job too, but some of our athletic coaching staff have really gone above and beyond, and the girls' field hockey and soccer teams, both of their leadership, all of their coaches have gone well above and beyond to not only support me as an officer and someone with breast cancer, but, you know, as their school resource officer, they've done an impeccable job. So, we're just so lucky in this district to have everyone here, and I'm lucky to continue to work here. So, thank you for all of that tonight.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Superintendent Gallagher, I didn't catch Officer Tierney's person name.
Officer. I don't know where it comes from.
All right, moving on. Well, tonight, we have a special award, the Massachusetts Superintendents Award. For every district, we, throughout the Commonwealth, each school district recognizes one student for outstanding performance and academic excellence. And it's really an honor, when I read through Sam Aquiviva's accomplishments, I actually feel like an underachiever myself, so I think I might have to go back to school. But it's just amazing. Academics first is for all student athletes, but just Sam's academic achievements, number one in the class with a GPA of a 4.0, and that's taking all AP and honors classes. What's amazing is, when you look at his transcript throughout his high school career, he's never got below an A in his four years at Newburyport High School. He's obviously applied to, you know, and been recruited by many, many Ivy League schools, but his top choice right now is MIT. His athletic accomplishments are amazing. He's KPN Runner of the Year, two years in a row, Mass, Massachusetts Division II State Champion, two years in a row. He's won every race he ran this school year, including sectionals and states. Boston Globe, Boston Herald, all scholastic. Massachusetts Runner of the Year, Monahan Student Athlete of the Month. And when you talk to Sam and you talk to his coaches, his number one, I think accomplishment is really, I think, elevating the team. I think the teams always come first for him, and being a good role model and a leader is his number one priority. But I think, leading by example, I think he really raised the bar for all the student athletes on the cross-country, where they won as a team Division II State Championship. So, at this time, I'd like to have Sam. It's an honor to give Sam Aquiviva the Massachusetts Superintendent's Award for outstanding performance and academic excellence. Angela, why don't you jump in here, and then maybe Steve can take a quick photo for us.
Awesome.
All right. I am going to start jogging next week. recognition. We'll be able to shake Sam's hand and some other people that are in the audience. So, this is the second aspect of our recognition. This is teacher recognition, and at this time, it's an honor to recognize Kathy Hill, who's been a wellness and physical educator in the district for 25 years. She's leading up the Teams of Tomorrow Skills Demonstration Team. I think this is the third year, where 65 third graders sign up in December. Ms. Hill will be working with them on basketball skills twice a week, and the students arrive at 7:00 AM for practice. There's three winter performances in January and February, and what they do is, they will show their skills off at halftime at the Newburyport High School varsity basketball games, and culminating performance at halftime at the Harlem Globetrotters game in Lowell. In addition to that, volunteerism, Ms. Hill takes an active role in implementing a lot of the community meeting ideas for the school, off of team building for the faculty and staff, and is also one of our mentors for the district. She's developed alternative recess plans, two days a week aligned with the zones of regulation tied to the PBIS. And in my short time, I recognize Ms. Hill goes above and beyond the day, putting always our students first and families first, and we just want to take a moment and thank her for all of her efforts and commitment to the students of Newburyport. So...
Congratulations.
I have a lot of parents here at this room.
I've been on the school committee almost 20 years. When I came on the school committee, she was winning awards.
We'll take a couple of minutes right here.
We need twelve days of fitness on Friday. If anybody would like to come and join us in our song, I'll be there.
All right. Don't put us on the spot on TV, so all the viewers are watching. All right. Thank you. We'll take a quick recess, and we'll...
Kath, congrats. The next item on our agenda is our Newburyport High School Student Representative.
The student council will be presenting their new structure to plan high school for the high school faculty during Friday's early release. They have redrafted their constitution to strengthen avenues for student voice. Their proposal includes each advisory room electing a student representative, as well as each club and athletics team. They will hold monthly meetings of the whole meetings to discuss and propose solutions to school-related issues. In years past, the council has primarily focused on planning fundraisers and Spirit Week. This is a genuine attempt for NHS to have a student government that works in a collaborative fashion with teachers and administration to improve Newburyport High School. This Thursday, we are going to hold a third recognition rally of the year. The class officers, along with the student council, have planned this week's rally. The school choir will showcase some of their work, and staff and students will participate in a friendly relay. Additionally, teachers will publicly recognize over 50 students for various accomplishments and service-related activities across the past month. Our winter sports season has begun, and the following teams have a record of 2-0 currently. That's the boys' basketball team, our hockey team, boys' track, and girls' track, and our girls' basketball team has a record of 0-3 as of right now. We also offer a variety of sports co-op teams, including girls' hockey, wrestling, swim team, and ski team, and those are all with various schools like Masco, Penn Tucket, or Triton. The high school music is putting on its annual winter concert, which is the choir and the band, tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, and it will be a free event. And finally, our honors theater ensemble class is currently prepping for drama festival competition, and this will take place in March. This year's play is called Marcus is Walking, and the setting of the show is from the inside of a car. To accomplish this, the students have creatively designed a set, which is a single car to facilitate smooth transitions of characters in and out of the vehicle throughout the show. As summarized by the dramatist's play service, the main theme of the show is to explore, quote, "the emotional landscape we roam as we travel in our cars." This will also perform at the high school in February.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is being held until January, the Brezner Hand School Data Presentation. There essentially are two reasons. One is that information was made available late in the game for the school committee to look at, and the other reason is that Tara Rossi was not able to present, and it's probably better for us to get the whole elementary team presenting at the same time. So, we'll be doing that in January. Great. And then I will move to district goals. I'll give that to Sean.
Okay, there's two agenda items. The district goals, we presented, or I presented, the last school committee for the first reading. I think they were all received by the school committee, so I think the second reading and a possible vote would be presented today. And then my superintendent goals are later on the agenda, so they're not the same. They're a little bit different.
Great. Anybody have any comments, anything they want to share? Actually, I would, on behalf of Dave. I know that Dave sent an email to you today with some questions about the goals, and I think you were in the middle of responding to them.
Correct. I think those are more on the superintendent goals and not necessarily the district goals.
Oh, terrific. Okay. That's fine.
Yeah.
Great. Take a vote.
Can I just ask one question? On the student learning goal, you...
No, there's, the district goals were, there was four district goals that we were doing.
I know, but there was one that, about supporting teachers and using their evaluation tool to determine. I just want, had a question about that.
Mm-hmm.
When you were talking about instructional strategies through the DESI evaluation process to ensure all staff are properly supported, you know, in professional learning goal, now, is that through the teacher's individual? This is the first one, the professional learning goal. Is this the teacher evaluation process that you're using to evaluate instructional, the use of instructional practices?
Yes, so I think as we're utilizing our evaluation in learning walks, it's really looking at those best practices tied to the teacher evaluation piece, yes.
But we only evaluate a certain percentage of teachers each year, correct?
No, all teachers get evaluated.
Why did I think that was only a percentage?
They're on two-year, two-year plans or one-year plans, but they all get evaluated every year.
Okay, because I was concerned about this being a professional development goal. If we weren't, if we're using this tool and we weren't evaluating teachers, I was concerned we'd be losing, maybe a gap.
Missing people. No, this is everybody.
Okay, thank you. We forgot to ask that last week, last meeting.
Do we have a motion to accept these goals?
Actually, I still have one question. Is there anything critical, Sean, that you felt you left out of these because it wasn't in the budget, or the timing wasn't quite there, or you sort of questioned and thought, gee, I wish I could do this, but I haven't been able to include it?
No, I think, remember, as, when I came in as part of my entry plan, it really went the extended leadership team over these district goals. So, we had buy-in for the 20 extended leadership team members, which then they created their goals, looking at our district goals, and then the principals and the, you know, the evals. So, I'm really happy in the sense that I think it's having us all focus together. So, this, a lot of these district goals really, you know, were not tied to a lot of like budgetary items in the sense. It was more like best practice. When we, my entry plan and going through the finance, and when I get to the superintendent goals in a little bit, that's where you'll see, you know, as gathering information and analyzing our budget and the budget process, you know, that's when I'll probably be presenting, you know, aspects of that.
I just had a quick question. It's not so much the goals. I think the goals are all great. I know, we talked a lot about SMART goals at the beginning of the year, and usually with SMART goals, there's dates and, you know, objectives tied to them. Is there like another, for you at least, like, you know, like one of these on the action stuff is create and host a community access monthly television show.
Correct.
So, like, do you have like a timeframe in mind? Like, are those all tied to something? Or is that any superintendent's?
That is going to be in there, yeah.
Not just in general, so I guess for any of those things, I'd kind of like to see like, or at least know when some of the action, I guess, is expected to take place.
So for, for this format, I've used, utilized your, the format that you've utilized in the past with other superintendent goals. So I kind of crafted how these goals towards how Newburyport has been known, so.
Okay.
But I can easily, when I present my.
And I'm not asking you to add them, I just, I guess, I'm just hoping that they're attached somewhere, right?
Yeah.
Just so it's not just kind of like.
Right, a lot of these, a lot of these action steps, especially when I present my superintendent goals, a lot of them are actionable and evidence produced. So it's really specific to that. So when school committee members do my evaluation on where I stand, you'll be able to, I think, see a lot of the evidence that's, that's being presented.
I appreciate that you used things we've done in the past as a format, and it's a good way to get things running. But I also know that one of the weaknesses that we've had consistently in our being able to do a self-evaluation of the district and of ourselves and of the evaluation of the superintendent is that the goals weren't presented to us in a SMART format. So we don't know, a lot is left up to interpretation as to what success looks like in each of the goals. And that is, you know, why I would, I would agree with Sean certainly on your personal goals, but hopefully also on the district, that we can get some of these reworded in the next couple of months or so to, to become true SMART goals that say, hey, this is how we're going to measure it. This is when it's going to be done, so that there's some structure to it and it's not just a, instead of, I think, very good, solid and relevant wishes right now. But I, I think we need to take it that, that one step further.
I appreciate the conversation because I, that was my first read-through was I was concerned that they weren't SMART goals, that they weren't actionable. But then as I sort of went through and then looked at what Superintendent Gallagher put together for his goals, it seemed that this was sort of a baseline of where we are today and where the district should go. But I think the, we need to be sure that this gets presented out to us at the end of June or in August. So that, because I think that's been a missing step, because from there, as the information on each of these action steps are shared, then I think I can see that roll into really much stronger and tighter SMART goals for, you know, your second year. And that's sort of how I assumed why they weren't as tight as we, I think, would like, or I would like to see. I appreciate the, the conversation, so is that a fair assessment?
That's a, that's a great assessment, Mayor, because, you know, the other piece is, you know, coming into the district, you have your, you know, your ideas in a way, you want to, I guess, put your stamp on how things are moving. But you also, as I'm coming in, I wanted to continue the format, so there's not a lot of change right away, all of a sudden. My, also another piece is to periodically update everybody on these. So not wait until June to let you, so that's where we're at. I'm hoping with a lot of the work that we're already doing, that you'll, you'll, this, a lot of these will resonate where you've already seen some of these being accomplished. But my goal, you know, for this year is also to update, like, kind of like a midpoint and then at the end of the year. And then very easily I could put, you know, timelines, you know, to, to some of those goals.
I know some of them, it's going to be next to impossible to put a timeline to it, but if we got a better picture of what the end result is, what it is that we're measuring, then we can say, oh, well, we've made progress. We're not there, and, you know, we won't be there for the next 17 years, and that's okay. But we can measure.
Well, I'm hoping we don't have.
Right, and whether we got there or not, it's to have a conversation, this is why we didn't get there, this is our goal.
Absolutely. And I plan on doing that anyways, reporting out to school committee. The other piece, remember, the, a lot of fact-finding is part of the entry plan. So when you get to the superintendent goals and you look at the professional practice, there's a lot of information that's going to be shared with school committee. But there's a lot of work that's going on behind the scenes for that, to really, your entry plan is to really get a sense of the strengths, the areas of growth, the opportunities and kind of what the future planning is going to be, but also tie it into a lot of the work that went into that strategic plan. And really pulling, pulling those points out there too, so. I think we're moving absolutely in the right direction for both the district goals. And then I'm hoping superintendent goals will be a lot more specific on my role in performance.
But I just, again, would like to just be sure, because I appreciate periodic updates as we go, you know, move forward. But just to take these goals and put them somewhere and that there is, you know, documentation that we presented school committee this update, so that, so we don't lose. I just feel like we keep creating new goals and new action steps. And what happened to the ones we were working on last year? What happened to the one that we worked on the year before? Some, some are very concrete and we get good information, but a lot of these are really good. And I'd like to see a more of a, I don't want to lose some of this information as we go forward, so that this, even if something is presented in March, still when a June report comes out that lists all, you know, the district goals and an update that we have really good information about ongoing and report out in October or whatever, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I move adoption of the. I move adoption of the school district goals as presented by the superintendent.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Great, thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Item number nine on the agenda is first reading of the draft calendars. In conversation with Sean, it seems to me that we have essentially two major decisions to make. And it might be helpful to sort of make them after we get a recommendation from the superintendent. The first decision I think we need to make is a before or after Labor Day start. And then the second decision that we need to make is Thursday, moving professional development to Thursdays or keeping it to Fridays. So, so that is my framework for the discussion. So if we could, if we could do that, try to make a decision about before or after Labor Day. I was going to ask Sean for his recommendation before we start that conversation.
So for the before Labor Day or after Labor Day, checking with some of my colleagues, other superintendents. So kind of the rule of thumb, and I think one of the parents might have mentioned it tonight, is depending on what Labor Day falls. So some districts will look at where that Labor Day holiday is, and if it's early, they'll tend to go after the Labor Day. If it's a later Labor Day, like, you know, the fourth, fifth, sixth or seventh, then they tend to go before Labor Day. So I did get some input from other districts, but as we all know with the weather, I mean, there's pros and cons either way. With the weather, especially the last couple of years, you know, a later start after Labor Day, then you start to move into late June and you start crunching on that, you know, June 30th. But, so that's just the information. And I'm not sure how the district has, I think you've had before Labor Day for a couple of years and other years you did it after Labor Day, so.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever framed the conversation about where Labor Day lands, but I think that's always kind of been an underlying factor in our, in our appreciation.
Is that not in the current contract? Because word on the street is that there's a thing in there saying this, if it falls on the second or third, it's post, and four, five, six is after. But then there's a clause saying they can not do that.
I don't remember seeing that.
There is, there is language in the contract that just says if it is a before Labor Day start, that it would be the long weekend of the Labor Day weekend. So if you have a start, then the Friday before the Labor Day weekend would not be a school day. That's what's in there.
And I did see that, Kathy.
But there's nothing that mandates those criteria.
You just get the Friday before the Monday off.
Right. And in some, you know, some districts, the union takes a vote, you know, where, if they're going to go before or after Labor Day, so.
I mean, this is only the first reading, right? We're not making a final decision today. I have a question about the professional development part of the Thursday, Friday.
Wait, let's, let's do the, yeah, let's, let's do before or after.
And I think part of your packet, you see where the days, if you stop before, I think it's the 12th that the, is the last day of school. Then if you add it to five snow days, you're, I think it's the 19th. And then if you go after, I think it's the 18th is the last day. I'm just, I'm speaking from looking at this for two weeks.
Very well, that's exactly right.
Is it? All right. So that would be the last day, and if you added the five snow days, you're up to the 25th, which is, you know, you still have some wiggle room there.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it's a few years of weather, which is not a scientific average, not a long-term average.
No.
Winters, because one year we started late and we still got the end of June, basically, because it was so terrible.
Exactly.
Was it last year, the electric issue, the power, right? So the main tower went down? Originally caused by a snowstorm, but not really down to snow or.
Yeah, you just don't know. I mean, that, that's the key, is you really don't know what, what the weather's going to bring. And that's why I reached out to some other districts and see how they kind of determine their, their start date, you know, before or after. And that's kind of what they, the rule of thumb generally is if you had an earlier Labor Day, then some districts choose to go after Labor Day. And if you had a later Labor Day holiday, then some districts will go before.
I mean, we definitely went post-Labor Day when we moved here. It was post-Labor Day until right around the Brezner Hand construction happening.
It varies.
It varies.
So that's the.
It's always been a, it's always been a topic of discussion.
Yeah, we definitely did a post-Labor Day during the Brezner Hand construction.
It's gone both ways.
We needed every hour when we could.
You can have her either way.
What do you mean, it's taking so long? Don't you know my kids have camp? Do we have some more information for the discussion here?
Yeah, I have the snow days for the last couple of days. So last year was an unusual year. Last year we had seven snow days, two-hour delays and one early release, all due to weather. So last year was unusually heavy. But the year before that, we had four snow days and three two-hour delays. So, you know, seven days impacted, but only four that were out. But I believe, I looked at the calendar back five years, I only brought the last couple. But, you know, we had one year, maybe three years or four years ago where we had no snow days at all, you know.
Fifteen, ten feet of snow in here.
Right, right. So it just, we can't predict the weather, you just don't know, and we live in New England, so.
Right. I seem to recall one year where between vacations that were already scheduled and snow days, we didn't go to school for five consecutive Mondays. And we can work on trying to arrange the Sunday lizards to occur on Saturday.
See what we do about that.
Can I ask a question? Tess, what do you think about the schedule? You don't have to say anything if you don't want to. I don't want to put you on the spot. I'm just curious what a student would say.
I think a post-Labor Day start is preferable for most students, just because I think, like, one of, one of the parents was saying about, like, the weather by the end of August and just nobody's really ready to go back at the time. I think the general consensus of most students and teachers that if you ask them would probably be a post-Labor Day start.
Thank you.
Do you prefer Thursday or Friday half-days?
Friday. I think that does arise the issue of, like, people leaving for the long weekend and, like, taking Friday off. So I can definitely see, like, an absence issue coming with that. But I think the flow of the week is definitely impacted by having a Thursday half-day. It seems a little bit choppier and it doesn't really help the students in any way. And I'm not sure what the benefit is for the teachers, but I think a Friday half-day is also preferable.
Thank you.
Are we on to that element?
No, no. Let's, let's, let's deal with post or pre and then move on to that conversation.
I will say over the past, so I won't go on the school committee here, but this came up last year when I came on. I say it's about 50-50 what I hear from parents about post and pre. I think, I think we hear from the same post people all the time, which is great. I like, and I, I like all of them very much. And I, and the ones that speak before, excuse me, kind of speak the same way. I don't think they're quite as, as passionate about it, but, you know, like I said, I would say it's probably 50-50. At least that's my opinion about where people stand. I think what people are much more concerned with those half-days than, and I think it's more about not being post or pre-labor days, where that last day of school falls.
Right.
I think the people that have talked to me at least about wanting to start before Labor Day are people who feel that a late end to school will impact the plans that they have for summer camps. That's been most of it. And again, I think you're right. I hear, this is one of those decisions that no matter what we do, we're going to get calls and emails.
Sure.
So I think it needs to be what makes sense for the people who are doing the work. I guess I go right back to where Bruce started the conversation. I'd love to hear what Sean has to say, the superintendent has to say.
I will say, most of the teachers I've spoke to want a, or prefer a pre-Labor Day start than a post. And it's pretty significant. I don't think that's even close.
Right.
I'm not talking to all of them either, but that's what I hear. They like, they like kind of getting in and they, you know, I think there's an excitement to the start of the year, but this, you know.
Right.
There's a worry about how long June drags on as well, so.
Right. Yeah, I mean, the other piece too is, you know, you bring up, and I think it's for the elementary and middle school, parents and families, they're, it's a little bit different in the sense of the high school schedule for your band, performing arts and athletics, they're usually starting in August. So, you know, unfortunately, I think for the high school, student athletes in the band, the Labor Day weekend and going away for that week, if you're talking about vacations, they're, the high school kids are usually back because they got practices, scrimmages, they're rehearsing. And it's probably, you know, when you listen to the parents about the vacations, and I totally agree, family quality time's important. But I think that's, you know, elementary and middle school where they're not, you know, you know, coming in and participating in, you know, a lot of the sports, so. Yeah, and I think we have about 600, do we have about 600, was it 400 student athletes? I forget, Mr. Wolf was just there. But we have, I think, over 60% participation for the high school with some sort of, you know, outside activity that's going to probably start at the end of August.
I think that's just sports. Over 60% of students play sports.
It's sports, and I know our band and.
Their band starts early too.
Yeah, because they band camp. Yeah, so the drummers all did this summer, so. Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's, it's pros and cons either way. I mean, and I, you know, I mean, you've started before Labor Day for two, has it been for two school years thus far? I think, right?
Two in a row.
Two in a row, so. Or if you continue that tradition?
Have we, is this on the table yet, or are we just?
We're having discussion.
Okay, we have a discussion.
No, okay.
So years ago, there was part of the contract, when the contract first was developed, there was language that said, when Labor Day fall, fell at a certain time, then the preference would be to stop before Labor Day. That could change somewhere along the way, and I don't have the contract language, or you know the year that it changed. But I guess what, what kind of, I'm hearing from people that have stepped forward and spoken is that this seems to be a real value in family time. And there also seemed to be some comment that some families are feeling micromanaged by the school district. And all I can say, and I'd say this based on the calendar, Labor Day is not going to fall any sooner than it is this year, unless it falls on September 1st. And I don't know, I haven't done the research, I don't know when that's going to happen. So for all these families who don't want to feel micromanaged, who really want to continue the partnership they have with the schools, and I think it was last week when you were doing some presenting, you're talking about the consultants coming here, working with people in terms of partnerships. Well, I think it's important that we maintain that partnership with parents and families. Well, I think it's important that we maintain that partnership with parents and families and kids. Not to put our student rep on the line, but you heard from her that, you know, post-Labor Day is preferred. I've also heard, Sean, from teachers, fifty percent would prefer a post-Labor Day. And as members of this committee know, I frequently argue for a post-Labor Day start. And, but I gotta say, and I, I will argue for that again this year, for this calendar, but I also have to add to it, Labor Day's not gonna start much sooner, again, you know, this soon again. So, I think that, uh, as consideration for what families have stepped forward to, and, and asked for, I think it's, it'd be wise to have a post-Labor Day start this year.
I think, you know, some of the frustration for the parents, and I know people think it's always the same parents, but it's because everybody else is like, well, they're gonna do it, so I'm also gonna show up, so that's how that works. The seeming lack of trying to be creative with the two full PD days, which could be shifted, or some other combination of moving that stuff, and when you see that other districts don't have the same amount, and all those things, I, I just don't, I'm with them, I don't know why something like can't be moved into August. Like, the June PD day, what, what generally happens on the June, especially Labor Day?
I, I understand that this discussion is related.
Things we shifted more than just say, hey, we have to have them the ten months that we have them, or however the numbers work. We can, is there, is it part of the contract that we can't get into that, moving those things, or is just because that's the way it's always been?
Different, uh.
Yeah.
Um, the amount of days are designated, but...
In the contract?
Yeah, but not, I, but not moving them. And, and when, and when it comes time for the professional development conversation, be happy to talk about, you know, what happens during certain times of the year, and why, why spreading them out is optimal. But, um, when you're ready to talk about that.
Yeah, that just kind of came into the Labor Day element of it from Amy.
But I mean, I definitely think there should be a narrative there, like, I mean, I think those are pretty good questions for parents to have, especially if they're doing the research and reaching out to other districts, I mean, they should know why, why we do it this way, and this is what we hope to accomplish.
And, and to be very honest, every year we say why we do it this way. Every year, we go over the same ground about why we do this. You can agree or disagree with that, but there is a, there is a narrative to it, and we will share that narrative. But, um, I personally, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, but I hope though, we're looking at our PD every year and looking for ways to make it better, and like, I hope it's, we're not just doing the same thing every year, I mean, I hope it's an ongoing conversation too, right?
And, and I, I do also think that calling this professional development, for a lot of people, that means, well, it's just training, you can schedule it another time, and the, the professional development time is also building into the schedule the opportunity for teachers to work together, to discuss curriculum, to discuss assessment, what, what the results of assessment are. So, you, you can't move those days to the beginning of September or, or August if you need those times to have meetings periodically during the year where you're getting teachers together, say, look, this is what we're seeing in our, in our assessments now, how can we make adjustments? So, that's one of the conversations that we'll have. But, but I also, you know, in, in sort of responding to Sean, it isn't just about training. It is, it's about creating opportunities during the school year for teachers to connect with each other. You know, and whether that's, you know, how we're doing IEPs, or, or, um, you know, do we have the sequence right? We're teaching math, are we getting kids ready to go to high school for math? Those are all conversations that occur during the year, um, and having hard data immediately, fresh data is really important.
Well, I recall also, a piece of that is towards the end of the year is when teachers get together to talk about placement. And we have a huge number of parents that come back to us and say, why didn't I get Ms. Jones as my teacher? I wanted her. And this is when the teachers have a chance to really think about that, and make sure that their kids are being placed with the right people for the next year. So.
And AP and honors and justice, all of those things.
Yeah, so, I, I don't think any of this calendar has ever been put together on a whim. The amount of time we spend discussing and going over calendars has always been one of the, the heavier items that we cover on any agenda during the year, because it does matter. We do care about how, how we affect, uh, family life, because we do believe it's important. But we also are here to make sure that our kids get the best possible education they can get. And if that means preparing our teachers in a certain way, that's something we need to do.
So, can I just follow up? So, when you're suggesting they do that preparation, in August or June?
June.
Okay.
Yeah. That's why I'm suggesting that it's not a time that can necessarily be moved to a different part of the year.
I think part of it's a PR thing too, because, I mean, some of the parents are like, what? There's like four days of school left, and you're doing this, or even the one in September, this, one of these is quite out, but one, it was like, one year was like nine days after the first day. And from what I hear, people are like, what, what has come up in those nine days that we need to have a, some sort of a training? That's, so it's, it's really about getting what that message is out, or what they're doing out, so parents aren't just like, what are you talking about? It's, it's PR more than trying to reinvent something, I think.
Right, and I think the, you know, if I may, so for me, as coming into the district, so this is, you know, as you're talking about an entry plan and looking at how we do PD and looking at these days, I, I can, um, let you know that, um, my daughter said he's back from college, so, I appreciate that.
You can put it on speakerphone.
So, just going back to that, so when, when we look at the professional development opportunities that we have here in Newburyport, um, other districts that I talked to, this is a piece that is very valuable of the time that our teachers, um, get to collaborate. And, uh, working with Assistant Superintendent Beck and, and looking at what our teachers are doing on these professional development days, I agree with, um, School Committee Member, uh, Callian, one hundred percent, that there's a lot of great work going on, and the teachers value that time, and are really, uh, working, um, to really develop those best practices, to analyze student data, to do the, uh, student outreach, to look at social-emotional learning. Um, but if we, you know, send out more, um, PR, and these are the, this is why this is so valuable, and that, you know, obviously, uh, will come from the central office, I think it's, that would be helpful. But, um, just to reiterate, I don't think there's any free time or downtime for the faculty and support staff. When, when I'm going out and visiting the schools, every minute, um, that they have to collaborate there, they're utilizing. The faculty meetings that are built into the schedule, you know, we talked about the district, uh, goals, that's that PLC format that's tied into the strategic plan. So, they're utilizing that time. Um, but for me, coming in within a couple of months to make a, um, I guess, an informed decision on, hey, this is where we need to go, this is what we have to do, I don't, I think that would, you know, with the, um, professional development and the great things that, that you have going, I, I need to learn more on some of the challenges. I need to, to meet with parents that are sharing their concerns either way, you know, pro and con for the PDs in the Fridays and the Thursdays. So, um, I think that's something really valuable that Newburyport has built into the, the daily schedule in the calendar, and it's something that, you know, that obviously we need to continue and, and to enhance. So, that's kind of where I'm at, as I'm learning, as I'm coming in to the system myself. But, um, that professional development time that's built into the, the calendar is a, um, is something that doesn't happen in a lot of districts, so I think it's a valuable asset.
Do you want a motion on pre or post-Labor Day?
Yeah, let me just explain to David before we take the motion. We, we're talking about the calendar, and we've sort of broken our task here into two tasks. One is to make a decision about a pre or post-Labor Day start, and then after we make that decision, we'll look at the professional development days on Thursday or Friday. So, in effect, the first motion when it is produced will be to vote for a calendar that starts before or after Labor Day, without picking which exact calendar. Then we'll have the discussion about professional development days. Okay?
Uh, motion to approve the 2019-2020 calendar for a post-Labor Day start.
You second?
Second.
Any additional discussion?
I do, I want to say something, but I don't.
No, go ahead.
I mean, just because it's, just because it's the second reading, I almost would like to see, I, at least for me, at least, I think it's overwhelming that we want to keep half-days on, on Fridays. So, I think we could eliminate those other two Thursday ones, at least that's, that's my feeling, that's the people, thing I hear from everybody else, that we're probably gonna keep those on Fridays. So, I would maybe like to hold off voting on the post, and, because I'm just more concerned with the last day of school, that's really I focus on, I'm not really focused on, on post and pre-Labor Day. I, I like to know where that last day of school is gonna be, so I almost would like to maybe come back for the last reading with a couple more options of, if, if those are the only two options we have, then that's fine, but like, if we... If there was a possibility to, to, to be creative and try to, you know, do a post-Labor Day start, but move that eighteen last day of school, then I, I wouldn't mind seeing that for our last reading then, trying to decide pre and post-Labor Day right now. That's my two cents, if, if that's not the case, then that's fine. I do, I do agree with Steve, it's never gonna be earlier unless it's the first, so if this is our year to do it post, I would say, let's do it, but, God, you just never know what's gonna happen, let's move to the eighteenth, it just seems like it's a long day, and then, like I said, most camps start then, so I, I just like to get the last day of school as early as possible. That's my two cents.
Just relate to something Mr. Riddin said regarding, uh, the Thursday versus Friday. And perhaps it, this does merit a little more discovery, if you will, related to the absentee. Because this data, if you look at this data comparing Thursday and Friday absences, you're looking at eight Thursday days where there's an average of a hundred thirty-eight absences on those Thursdays. You're looking at eight Friday days where there's two hundred ninety-six absences. And if we're gonna be going up against, uh, state expectations, or, or, what do we call them, guidelines or statutes?
Or indicator.
Indicators, indicators.
Yeah, for chronic absenteeism.
And if we don't perform up to spec on those indicators, what happens to us? And, and maybe we need some time to discover that a little bit more. But, uh, so I'm not saying that we hold off on votes, but I think there's, I think there's several things that come together here. Because that, to me, that, the difference in the absentee rate is incredible.
It's not as bad as you think. So, I went through and did all math, and the average is really twenty-four more kids didn't come in on a Friday than was on Thursdays. There's one, there's one date that has three hundred and fifty-two absences.
Yeah.
A third of them were seniors.
Yeah.
And that was the ML, the Friday before MLK Day.
Yeah.
What happened?
I don't know, but all I'm looking at, Brian, I'm just, I'm just taking out... I took out March in two thousand seventeen or eighteen because of all the snow, and it just added up total absences and divided by eight.
Right, but if you do, if you remove that anomaly of the three hundred and fifty-two, and you do the whole thing, Thursday, Thursday skips were ninety-four on average, Friday after Thursday half-days were ninety-six. Is that the same, now, some of our kids who took Thursday and Friday off?
But then you should remove something from the other set of data, too, you can't remove data from one and not the other.
That's fine.
Are we, are we getting into the second part of the discussion?
But anyways, no, I appreciate you doing the studies, I respect that.
I don't think we're ready to vote, so I withdraw my motion. Okay. And you withdraw your second, withdraw the second?
I second it.
Should I withdraw the second?
Yep.
I'm withdrawing my motion to approve a pre or post-Labor Day start for the calendar for next year. And Nick DeCandrea is withdrawing his second, which is the appropriate procedural move, because it's clear that we're not ready to vote on the shot.
What, what, um, expectations do we have of the superintendent for the next meeting?
April tenth, Good Friday. Why now, are we still?
Isn't that a union thing?
It was one union, right? It was like secretaries, custodians, and secretary orders.
It's the absentee.
It's the absentee unit.
One of the things, as you continue to review the absentee data, because, um, Brian, after you had made this request, you know, it took us a while to gather it, but then we really, we really sat and took it apart, unpacked it. One of the things, if you notice, that we marked the high absentee dates in red, so you could see those. One of the things that becomes really evident is the budding up to the vacation times. So, maybe that's something that needs to be considered too, in thinking about Friday versus Thursday release days, but maybe you think about that release day butted up to the vacations. I know that that was something that happened as a convenience for families, but if that just means longer vacations rather than leaving a little earlier in the day, um, that's when your highest, that was pretty profound. That's when the highest absentee rates generally happen, is when the release day is butted up to a vacation. So, I just bring that to your attention, I'm sure you noticed that yourself, but in case you didn't, as you consider this data, to think about that.
But this new information about absenteeism being an indicator.
Right.
I think that's something that has to be, you know, sent out. I think there should be a, a calendar memo or, you know, alert sent home to families and sort of walk them through, show them some of the data, talk about the implications of, you know, this absenteeism, and, you know, so they can't leave on vacation at one instead of Thursday night.
I think any of the parents splitting early for a vacation, we are aware of that. I mean, and that's why some of the, like, you know, pre-K and K, those are interesting numbers, but it's not weighted the same as a kid in eleventh grade, it shouldn't be. I mean, I know that we, kindergarten, we always left early for holidays, because...
And that's not really what it's like for us.
It's not important, but they're five.
Right.
Can I ask two questions?
Yeah.
I was curious about the, the absentee data myself, and I'm wondering, first of all, are we sure that the kids who leave early for vacation, those extra absences, are they actually missing enough days to be counted as chronic absentee kids?
Yeah, so when, when you look at, so basically, the state's looking at a cohort. So, anytime you have a cohort, if it's, uh, students with disabilities, it's ELL, it's twenty students or more, right? So, that's gonna designate a cohort. So, when you're looking at the absentee, chronic absentee is now a new indicator for the state, and right now, it's grades one through eight. So, what they do is, a student that has eighteen absences or more, which is almost like four a quarter, is gonna fall into that category.
Right, so, I guess what I'm asking is, those kids who are leaving early for vacation, are they missing four days per quarter? Or are they missing that one day per quarter to leave early for vacation?
Well, I think...
Like, these otherwise exceptional, exceptionally attending students?
We didn't go through individual names on all of this stuff.
Because we're, we're making an assumption that the half-days are adding to our chronic absenteeism rate.
Well, I think you start looking...
I think we're questioning that, I don't think we've made that assumption yet, but... Well, unless, unless we do that statistical analysis, we are gonna make, take a vote based on that assumption. So, that's one question. My other question is, our schedules for the half-days, are we, like, what kind of bell schedule are we running? Are we, are we scrunching a normal bell schedule into a half a day?
So, abbreviated schedule for the day, so the kids are meeting with all their teachers.
Do they?
Yeah, it, it depends, it depends on the building, it, everybody does it differently. The high school has a release day schedule, so they follow a particular schedule.
Are they still trying to C blocks A through F?
No, not, not necessarily, no. It's not like they have just twenty-minute classes and everybody goes to all their classes, no.
Because, I, I guess that was my question, is, I'm trying to think of, are we doing at the school the best job to say, hey, guys, this is still a legitimate learning opportunity? Just to put it out there, I bet you there are a lot of movies being shown the day before vacations. I know that when I, as a teacher, used to be presented with twenty-minute classes, it was like a wrap-up day. was like a wrap-up day, clean your locker kind of event. Those sorts of days that kids know about, families know about, people don't take seriously. And I'm not sure if that's happening.
I don't think we're doing that.
I'm actually, I was going to ask the student if she went through a.
I guess it depends on the level of the class. I've found a lot that in my, like, lower-level classes, like CP or honors level classes, on those half-days, we do have shortened blocks. We don't try and meet, like, every single class that day, I think we meet four classes as opposed to a five that you would meet. So, I think they're in, like, fifty minutes long as opposed to seventy-three minutes. So, it's definitely shortened, and depending on the level of the class, the amount of work that your teacher will try to get done definitely varies, so at, like, a CP or honors level, I've definitely watched a fair amount of movies, but in AP or sometimes honors level class, we'll use every single second that we can get, so I think it definitely depends on the building and the class structure, but.
And fifty minutes is still a good tone of class, is that, is that similar at the middle school? Or are they trying to run?
Well, I think it depends, I think, I can't, every release day isn't exactly the same. I think sometimes at the middle school, I have seen an altered schedule where they're doing an enrichment work or advisory work that they're able to do on a day like that because they've got a change in the schedule. So, they may work in something that they can't work in typically on a typical schedule and be able to offer that to the students on a release day. So, there's a variety of things happening, but it's certainly not a, we're not going to do anything today because it's a release day, or we're not going to show movies every release day, or that kind of thing. I think people are really trying to think creatively about how do we use the time, the time is different, how can we maximize it to offer the students?
And, and I guess personally, that's, that's always my fear about pushing days into the end of June. Is, my experience is those become clean-up-the-room days because it's the end of June, and it's so far after any testing period, any, like, anything. So, unless you have a final exams week.
Right.
Which, do we have, we have a final exam week at the high school?
Yes.
So, after APs, we have all, all kids in all classes take finals?
Except seniors.
So, at that point, they're still learning up until the end.
You have to meet requirements.
At the middle school and elementary level, those days become hot and long. And so, I'm always in favor personally of an earlier start because I think days late in June, people are done.
If I, if I can just jump back to sort of one of the questions that we've asked Sean, and there may not be any answers to. And again, it's that indicator that the state is now using about chronic absenteeism. And the questions, and they're significant questions for me, are three. One is, how, what happens if you have high chronic absenteeism? What does the state do? Are there sanctions? Are there explicit sanctions on those schools? And that, to me, is resource, you know, are we, you know, are we going to gain resources? Are we going to lose resources? Or are we going to be instructed to spend in certain ways that, you know, you can only spend, you know, because you have this problem, you have to spend money doing this kind of activity, this kind of, of learning? But they can say that you need to have a program that deals with this.
Right, but they can't say that you have to spend money that way.
Right.
Well, actually, if I could, with your entitlement grants, they can, and they do do that. When you don't meet your accountability status, or when there used to be leveling in the school, if you were a level two or below, any of your federal funds that you received, you had to attach a certain percentage of that money to fixing that problem in your school, so.
So, I, I just, any, any light that can be shed on what the state is thinking even at this point, and, and there's an assumption that the state is actually thinking about some of this stuff, I recognize, is going to be very helpful to me. So.
You know, I think I mentioned this the last time, that, and, you know, Sean and I can see if we can get more, any additional information, but it's my understanding that this is just the tip of the iceberg around trying to identify school quality, and that's where this is coming from, and they're starting with attendance data and identifying, you know, they're trying to find indicators that they can measure around school quality. So, this is the beginning, this is the first measure, I don't know where it will go from there.
Right. Is, um, to get back to a question that Dave had, are we collecting the data in a way that eventually, with many more keystrokes, we can track the information about what kinds of students are missing on Friday? Is, is the data input in a way that it can be extracted to make that kind of a report?
Yeah, I believe so, you know, all of our data is input through our student information system, and that's where we pulled all of this data, so, you know, any indicators that we use in our student information database, we can sort by, so.
So, you could, you, you could ask the database to sort students who are eighteen days or more out of the year absent, and then you can back into when those absences are occurring.
That would be very helpful.
So, just, I can answer, you know, and I think maybe for our next school, I would like to do a full presentation for everybody, I think that would be extremely helpful, especially even for the public, regarding absenteeism in the state, because I did contact the state, and they're still trying to wrap their heads around this cohort, all right, of chronic absenteeism and the indicator and how it's going to impact schools. So, I know that that's a big piece right now that the state's grappling with. I don't think, at this point, they're looking, you know, for taking funds away or any of that type of stuff. They're really just kind of looking at utilizing this as an indicator. So, I went back just, and I looked at if we would have a cohort of students that would fit into this chronic absenteeism cohort, and looking at, you know, the Breds and looking at the Mullen, and we don't have enough students that we would have a cohort based on last year's attendance, but at the NAW, we would have a cohort that would fit into that chronic absenteeism, where twenty more students have eighteen or more absences. So, I think that, you know, just on the surface, looking at, you know, where, where do we stand? The high school, remember that their next generation of cats are coming into this year, so they're kind of on the old benchmarks and, for, for last year. But the state is kind of grappled with this, this new indicator on absenteeism. So, if, if you have twenty or more students that have eighteen or more absences, that is going to be now a cohort. So, Newbury Port High, we'll just say, middle school has five hundred students, and based on last year's attendance, we would have a cohort of chronic absenteeism. If you went to Beverly or Masco, any other district in the state, if they have twenty or more students that have eighteen or more absences, that's going to be a cohort, so it really doesn't.
Per school?
Per school.
So, like, if you have a K eight, you still got twenty, if you have a five eight, it's twenty, if you have six eight, it's twenty, or if you have nine hundred students, it's twenty.
Four or five.
It's not a percentage, it's just twenty kids.
Yeah.
Well, that's sensible.
Well, that's.
It's how they indicate any kind of subgroup though, Dave, now, for anything. That's how they indicate by blood or ELL.
I always thought it was a percentage of kids, not a, not a number.
You have to have a minimum of twenty for them to provide you the data on that group of students as a subgroup, so.
So, that's, that's the, and so, right now, the state is taking, just like you said, they're taking a look at all of this from talking to one of the state officials today. They're still wrapping their heads around, you know, what this chronic absenteeism cohort's going to look like, and how is it going to impact schools. So, right now, they're looking at grades one to eight, and a lot of the superintendents and districts are giving a lot of feedback to the new commissioner, Commissioner Riley, who's really open to getting feedback from a lot of the districts. So, I don't think we're at the point right now to, to say, you know, that this cohort's going to hurt us for funding or things like that, I just think right now, the state's still trying to understand what they're going to do with this. But I would, if it would be helpful for the school committee, I could just do a, a full presentation and, and give you all as much information beyond just the calendar and looking at, you know, and looking at dates and, and all of that, but really just give you a, a full picture, because that's what it seems like, that, that I think we need in the, in the community, so the parents need to understand that absenteeism is now going to be part of our data collection. And when, you know, within the new ranking system, I would like to cover that with the school committee because it's no longer levels, there's different ranking and what's that going to mean, and I think that might be a good time just to really present the whole overview of this topic, so.
Would part of that presentation be, or does it need to be also the professional development activities? Can we look at, you know, how many of those days are training days, how many of those days are PLC days, how many of those days are, are, are activities around transitions? So, that, that, that would, I think, be helpful.
Right.
Helpful for the community to hear, helpful for us to hear as well.
Oh, I, I think, um.
Number of hours?
Yeah.
You know, in terms of.
I think a full presentation.
Really, if you look at the half-days, it's probably about forty hours for the half-days, and then you add the two full professional days, so, you know, we're not talking a tremendous amount of time, but it touches thousands of kids and families.
Right.
So, that's, you know, trying to find that, that right balance. I still, you know, I, I mean, I, I still think that one of the, the greatest issues that I have heard continually is to have such chopped schedules. And I think the Friday tried to help that when we looked at that last year, but I still see there's, you know, days on the calendar where there's just too much, and, you know, there's just.
I did the counting, less than half of the, half of the weeks of the year are full.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so it gets.
We're, we're all over the map with a little bit of this, a little bit of that, a little bit of this, a little bit of that.
I think part of the problem is just, you know, it's math, part of the problem is math, because these issues are felt more keenly, you know, in months where there are vacations, you know, that it gets even more chopped when you add a half-day here, and that kind of stuff. Thanksgiving, we have days off and.
It's actually the worst in October.
Right. October's the worst.
Well, because we, we moved the half-day there, then there's Columbus Day, then there's another half-day, so that's, like, three of the four weeks are broken up.
You have the fourth.
The fourth, and then, the, for some reason, Columbus Day is not marked as, the seventh? So, the fourth, the first week, the second week, and the fourth week are all, are all chopped up in this one calendar, I'm looking, draft number two, because we moved that other. Can I ask two questions while we're looking for data at some point? I'm curious about chronic absentee kids and their grades. Essentially, does it matter if the kids are in school?
Grades as in?
Like, can a, can kids still get an A and a B in being chronically absent?
Right.
Like, are, are we, is, does class time affect their overall learning?
Well, and, and that was one of, because remember, our commissioner, Commissioner Riley, that's one of the feedback points to him, in the sense of, and he, and I think he fully understands that, you know, when you're looking at chronic absenteeism, there is legitimate reasons why some, you know, students are going to be absent, you know, if it's illness, if it's, you know, issues that are going on, and to categorize, put them all in one bucket and say, well, all these kids have eighteen more, and it doesn't matter if they're excused or not excused, and that kind of goes against, we don't want to be sending kids to school that, you know, are ill or have issues. So, the feedback that the commission is getting regarding this indicator is, he's receiving a lot of that feedback from superintendents, that by making attendance and, and putting everyone in the same category, you're, you're now, you know, not allowing families to make a judgment and, and keeping their students home, so. And he's been receptive to that, and that's kind of why the state's kind of looking at this chronic absenteeism, and then correlating, is it having an impact?
Yeah, and, and not that.
On grades.
Phrases carefully. I don't always believe that a class of grade indicates the amount of learning that has gone on.
Correct.
And I think that's why you're bringing the standards-based learning process and reporting kind of thing, but at least it's something, and it's, for now, it's what we have. So, it'd be, it'd be interesting to see if kids are still high achieving and, you know, because like Brian said, when you're in kindergarten, you miss a couple extra days, you don't really think much about it. So, are people thinking about that in element, in middle school at the NAW, when they're starting to see that, and then again in the high school? Or are they just saying, whatever, it's not going to be a big deal, I'll just make it up, or there's not going to be anything missed anyway?
Right.
Or, I'm going to get the work in advance, my teachers are cool with it?
Right.
Like.
One other, one other piece of information that I suspect we can get with more digging that, I, I don't know if it's going to be useful or not, but it's possible for students to be in two or three different cohorts, right? You can have chronic absenteeism, you can have special needs services, can, can we figure out, is, are there any trends, you know, in, in these high absentee rate? You know, I, for example, I would think that kids whose health is compromised would be more likely to have higher absentee.
Correct.
But, you know, is, are there other correlates that are possible to draw in part of other cohorts, you know, whether it's an income cohort or whatever? I, I would think that would, that would be helpful, and I would hope the state would be looking at that as well.
They are, you can, you can file, like, a waiver for a student that is out, like, helped. It's, it's, by filing that waiver is, right now, the process is not, is not.
Does that mean they're no longer excusing excused absences?
Well, the state's looking, as I said, from every district, they're looking at, if there's students that have eighteen or more absences regardless of the reason.
You're stirred on.
Excused or not.
So, my next question is, is there a way for us to understand what we're currently doing with families of chronically absent students? Like, we probably have some.
Oh, yeah.
Already working on, so I, I'd just be curious as to what we're.
Yeah.
Because that'll probably speak to Bruce's question about.
Of course.
You know, different subgroups and how are we leveraging different levels of supports?
Right, because then you, you tie into our, like, adjustment council work, and outreach to the families, you have school phobia, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues that are going into the chronic absenteeism.
Yeah, because then maybe we need somebody, another, like, home outreach person in the district, somebody can go and work with families, go to the mornings, that kind of thing.
I just think, I, I think this is a great, a great conversation, and, and I think I'd really like to have the opportunity to present an overview of kind of everything we talked about in, in one presentation instead of kind of bits and pieces that, that we're all getting right now, so.
I think that would be very helpful.
I just think we should make sure that we have a second public comment, or, you know, after our presentation, somehow that we, you know, sort of like we did on, on school violence, that forum we had, you know, that really worked, engaged parents, and tell them that we're really going to listen and have a conversation with them, do a presentation after your presentation, then maybe hear some feedback from parents, and then have our discussion, something like that.
Certainly do that, I think that would be a great idea.
Because we had talked about trying to do a few of those a year since it was a very successful forum last year.
I just have a question on the timeframe for it. Would this be later in January?
Yes.
Or, because I'm just thinking to get all this data together, right? It would be difficult to do it for early January.
I want to take the opportunity to thank you guys for putting the calendar together so early.
Yeah, it's nice we're having this conversation now.
Like, I think we usually get it in February and start having those conversations, if I'm not mistaken, so.
That's right.
Now is.
We've done it earlier in years past, too.
Sometimes.
It hasn't been a consistent.
But this has been a big help.
Yes, yes.
We'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
Right, and, and, you know, after your presentation, you know, we, you know, we, we might need more time for the current calendar that we have to kind of take a look at everything first, so. But that will just give, I think, the school committee members more opportunity.
And the community.
Exactly. Yeah, just take a look, and, and I think, and we all, and the parents are understanding, I think, the mandates that the state's, you know, especially with the new accountability system, and tying in absenteeism into that in. you know, especially with the new accountability system and tying in absenteeism into that in performance. So I think the, a presentation for me, I think, would be beneficial for them.
Can I ask a question? So are we going to stick with these four for now then? Or are we going to get presented with new calendars next time? I'm just curious.
Well, I think, I would suggest that, you know, you have the four and then as we go back and take a look at the calendars, if we're going to give another option, we can present that too, but.
So we're, I guess the school committee is open to other options.
Sure.
Yes.
Is that the diplomatic way to put it?
Yes.
Yes. So, see what, see what, as you're putting the presentation together, see what you learn, what you're going to share with us. So we will consider the 2019-2020 draft calendars as unread for this meeting. This is not the first reading, so. I also want to comment, the discussion was very helpful, I think, in really sort of pinning down what are the challenges the district is facing and how we're dealing with it, so. Item number ten, are the superintendent's goals first reading. I'm going to turn this over to Sharon.
All right, I'm going to jump up back here for the, I put the same information into PowerPoint, so it'll be easier for us, I think, to go along and be able to share this also with the viewers. Guys, I'm getting this presentation up. You'll notice that the professional practice goal is really a lot of work around the entry plan and then also working, you know, with the superintendent and especially a lot of the new superintendents within the Commonwealth and the mentoring program. This is really kind of centered around the entry plan, the entry plan findings, so. This is how I know they practice in the summertime because these guys are all practicing drum majors there. So when we look at the first superintendent's goal, professional practice goal, transition into the Newburyport community, develop comprehensive entry plan. We've already presented kind of the entry plan, kind of what we've been working on, what I've been working on, enrolling in the new superintendent's induction program. So as part of that program, all of the new superintendent's goals, Commonwealth, kind of all working as a cohort and kind of sharing, you know, different entry plans. And I think that's been very, very helpful. Present the written entry plan, continue to compile and analyze entry findings. So all of those interviews, looking at our data, all of that since July is going to be rolled into entry plan findings. Continue to develop methods for when we're looking at central office. We're going to have some legendary people retiring out of central office this year and kind of taking a look at that and the structure, the financial management, the human resources and operations. And obviously, when we look at this, not only as a district review when we look at pre-construction assessment and student learning, but also working in my first budget proposal with the district. So we're looking at all of these areas within the school system. Continue to research funding, resources, and we're looking at special education costs and programming. And there'll be parts of this in the entry plan, but we also sent our special education costs and program out to NESTEC. And NESTEC runs a comprehensive report and projections, which are also tied into our budget proposal. Continuing the professional practice goal, and I really think that this is extremely important, is to utilize the current strategic plan as a guide. So all that work that the community has done on that comprehensive strategic plan, utilizing that as a guide because you can't, as a superintendent of a school system, you don't have a full year to really just sit back and collect findings and all that. You still got to run a district. And the strategic plan has been very, very helpful on continuing the momentum that's already been established. Part of that is looking at flexible scheduling, looking at the latest time, technology education, expansion of the world languages, and development of community business partnerships. So all of that is tied into the entry plan findings. So in March, present the entry plan findings and key strategies to enhance current strategic planning action steps. And then in April, really work and collaborate with the school committee members and begin identifying the areas of growth for the district or focus on, tied to our current strategic plan. Continue to enhance communication with school committee, the school district personnel, and community at large through a variety of platforms. And that's the, you know, the district website updates that we're doing right now. It's the Friday memo that we've established. It's really being visible and talking to the faculty and community at large, going to events, meeting with parents, focus groups, surveys, all of that information as part of the entry plan. And we've kind of shifted this student learning goal. This is very similar to the district goals, so we didn't want to have the district goals and then just the superintendent's goals on their own. It's all really tied in, and these student learning goals are tied to my performance. So it's implemented district-wide learning walks, which we've done, extended leadership team members, really tying in best practice. And we touch base with those. And really, that's kind of going to drive our instructional practices. Provide professional development for support staff, principals, and district leaders and working on instructional leadership strategies, really in a cohesive team. So we're all working for the same goal. And for me, as a superintendent, to provide support for the building principals and have them develop their instructional leadership strategies or as instructional leaders, really enhance a lot of the work that they're doing and giving them opportunities. Working our extended leadership team meetings as a structured workshop instead of just housekeeping, really taking that opportunity to really, to bring in, you know, different aspects of professional development for extended leadership team. And then share instructional leadership resource professional reflections through Google Classroom. So we have a Google page for our extended leadership team where we're sharing, you know, information, instructional leadership strategies with them. So I know that we, as we continue this, update the evaluation software. So we've had a baseline edge throughout the district. We had some issues in the beginning of the year about them updating and just really continue to work with the union membership. So we're all on the same page regarding when you, sharing best practice. You need to provide feedback and the feedback, similar to students, to teachers, needs to be immediate. Collaborate, the extended leadership team, regarding the decal, district accommodation plan, and making sure that these accommodations are in the mainstream classes. So when a student is struggling, so we're all taught in the same language that we'll do these strategies to help all students. Supervise and evaluate principals and central office administration as instructional leaders. And then establish leadership norms and strategies for classroom visits. Determine consistent feedback protocols. So, and I just, I brought these slides back because this is really from July when I first met with the extended leadership team. This is what we're talking about. These are the five best instructional practices, like throughout every lesson and working with teachers and principals through that. So clarifying the learning objectives, utilizing student exemplars, rubrics, frequently checking for understanding, a variety of instructional practices for the learning. Key is scaffolding, the complex, you know, learning that's going on in the classes through graphic organizers, reading strategies, foundations modeling. So you'll see that within an effective lesson. And then at the end, reinforce what was on learning outcome. So this has been shared with principals and principals are sharing this throughout the school with teachers. So we talked about that PLC as part of the district goals, enhancing our PLC. And this is going to tie to Billy Donigan's work. What do we really want students to, this is for every unit, to know, and we went over this a couple of weeks ago, to learn, know, be able to do. So it's developing those power standards through essential questions and tying in our 21st century learning strategy. And then here's the key, how do we know they've really learned? What's the evidence that students have learned? That's your high-level authentic assessments. How do we generate data to analyze learning? And that's the common assessments and rubrics. And I know there was a question, well, how does that tie to student learning? It's on its own. So your diagnostic formative assessments are constant. Identifying specific supports and extensions of learning. And the two aspects that I think we do well, how do we respond when some students don't learn or are struggling, but more, how do we respond when students have already learned the material? So when they're coming into your class and they already understand a lot of those concepts in the beginning of the unit. So these are the essential questions that we continue to work with principals, but then working, having principals working with teachers. And these are some of those big, big concepts that we talk about. And then this should tie right back to the students, working with our students. What do they need to know? They always, you know, we always say, what does good look like? So when you're walking into classes and a student, we ask, what are you getting good at today? Instead of what are you doing today? It's what are you getting good at? And then what's, what's good look like? So when you're in the classes talking to students, they should be able to articulate, this is what I'm, this is what I'm getting good at, and this is where I want to be. Where are they at now? And then how do, how do they get to where they need to be? And then what happens when they struggle or fail? I think that's really, really important, working with students. And then last superintendent goal is the one that I think I'm really excited about and I think all of us share this, is not only enhancing the communication with faculty and support staff through a variety of modes, but really identifying those exemplars of effective practice, not only for the principals but for our faculty and support staff. And then giving them an opportunity to share some of the great work that they're doing. Upgrade our district and school websites for easy access. And we're still in the process of that. And I think we'll be going live after the holidays for a lot of our new websites and what that's going to look like. I think it's going to be a lot easier for parents and the community to access information and enhance the social media. So we, I have a Twitter account myself and we have some principals that now have a Twitter account. And a lot of, like, I know Principal Rossi tweets out her professional development to parents, like what the teachers are doing for that day. And going back to School Committee Callahan's suggestion on, you know, we should get the word out. I think that's the best way through Twitter. And parents can access, you know, what the teachers are doing during the PK, which is valuable. And then the last piece is, I really believe we have a great senior center here. You have a wonderful access television, community access, and really developing, I think, a show highlighting the successes of the district. So not necessarily just waiting for school committee where we are recognizing students and staff, but I think any type of like access show that we can really highlight the great work that's going on in our schools is something that's really, really important. And something that I've done once in Wilmington and also in my past in Beverly. And I think the families really appreciate that because you can spend a lot of time highlighting the successes of the district. And then just some great work that's going on throughout our community. I have hundreds of pictures now, but here's just some, some great ones in the last few weeks. So that's a quick overview. I didn't read you all the bullet points. I sent the superintendent goals out to everybody. But if you have any questions regarding superintendent goals for the first reading, just let me know.
If you have any comments or anything you'd like to say. I do, okay? I have to say that, and maybe it's just, I've had an epiphany or something, but I, for the first time, really can see in a superintendent's goal, structure, what it's going to look like in a classroom, when we're doing the things that we want to be doing, what that, how, how it's going to impact student learning, which I greatly appreciate. You know, you know, people can discuss whether the goals are smart enough or whatever, but I have a pretty clear understanding of what's going to be happening in classrooms as a result of the energy that you're putting, the vision you're putting into the district. That's a pretty interesting marker to lay down for us in terms of our evaluation view.
I appreciate that. And I think coming into the district and the first meeting with the teachers, our number one focus is going to be on teaching and learning. And really, my role as superintendent is not only the vision, which I think the vision is coming from the bottom up anyways, but really providing our staff, administration, and students with the support that they need. It's a very challenging time in education today. And I just think by all of us working together and keeping a focus on teaching and learning and doing what's best for this district is really going to be the catalyst to move us forward. And I'm really excited. As I said, I've only been here a short time, but I, you know, no offense, I feel like I've been here for a long time.
Bet some days you're feeling you've been here a long time.
No, it's, 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 it's a, it's a great community. And, you know, down the road, I want us to be the community that people will come out and see, not only just statewide, but in the national, at the national level. So that's my ultimate goal because we're going to be doing some unbelievable work here in Newburyport Public Schools, one day at a time, you know?
Just a couple of questions. I mean, I sent the questions in advance, so I don't know if you want.
Yes, yeah.
I just talk, speak to those.
Sure.
I guess the first one that pops out is the student learning goals. They all read like faculty improvement goals. So, like, all of that stuff has to do with what the central office is doing with the teachers.
Correct.
So I'm trying to figure out how to differentiate between the professional learning goals and the student learning goals. Because usually those have to do more with what students are.
Correct. So for the student learning goal, it's really how you're going to improve, right? The student achievement and the growth. So as superintendent, my goal is to work with our leadership team and really identifying, having them become the instructional leaders of the district, which then they'll take their expertise as they're working with teachers into data meetings, professional development, classroom, and for all of us to focus on those best practices and to work with teachers that are doing some great work to enhance that and then also some teachers that need more support and enhance that. So if, as you're looking at this student learning goal, if our principals and administration aren't leading the instructional leadership, then it's not going to happen in the classroom.
I get all that, a hundred percent. I guess I'm curious to hear, and I think we've, we've been talking about it with each principal as they come to talk about their schools, so maybe that's where this makes the most sense.
Sure.
What do you, what do we know about the students in the chair that we feel needs to be set as a goal to improve?
Right.
That make sense?
Yes. So as for the superintendent.
Yeah.
It's, it's my goal to work with our principals to identify those needs collaboratively so then they can effectively make those changes in the classroom.
I a hundred percent agree.
Right.
I'm just, maybe it's the, the idea, the idea of essential, I think it's maybe the label that, that kind of sets me curious. That's not on you, that's on Desi, so we won't, we won't get too hung up on that. That's not on you, that's on Desi, so we won't, we won't get too hung up on that. I also think in the, I said in the, in the slide that you talked about the five practices.
Correct.
And then there was another one that sort of mentioned something similar with the questions, what do we do if students are struggling, or what do we do if students already know?
PLC.
And then there was a, another one with, with the five questions, with the questions you said, what do we do with students? What do I do if I'm?
Yeah. With their party learning. That ties to the rigor.
Right. So I was going to say, all three of those slides kind of point to the same question is.
Correct.
Can we add some language that's, that talks about the kids who have already learned? And what are we going to do about rigor? And I know Principal Furlong started to talk about some things that she's doing to look into that at the school level, but just, just to somehow keep that.
Absolutely. I know, I know, I, I, I know where you're going with that.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the, the last piece was about the scaling of best practices, because under the district improvement goal, it says develop methods and protocols to record or store exemplars of effective practices.
Correct.
Which is great.
Yes.
But I guess what I'm even more, more interested in is, is having, you know, Teacher A who's doing something awesome. How do we make sure that Teacher A is standing in front of Teachers B through Z, saying, this is why I started it, this is why it's awesome, this is the student work to show that maybe we should all get on board with this.
Correct.
Kind of like what you're doing with the standards-based learning cohort.
Exactly. So that's, that's working, you know, for the superintendent, working with my administrative team and the principals to work with them to help facilitate that practice. So when they have in a faculty meeting, or it's a half-day PD, that we are edging out some time for the faculty to present best practices. And to, to see that happen, which was even last week, we had paired, you know, we talked about peer-to-peer mentoring, and all my walkthroughs with Principal Furlong, I went into a great science lesson, and there was a teacher observing that lesson. So that's some of the work that I think just from us talking with the principals and working with the great faculty, that they're taking advantage of, hey, this is a good lesson, I'm going to go and watch that. So as part of my walkthroughs, you know, I had two science teachers, one was observing the lesson, you know, going into that best practice. So I, I agree. And for me as a superintendent, it's working with our principals down to the, the, the classroom level. And as a principal, my goals were a lot different because, you know, now I'm, I'm working with them.
Knowing that you guys were doing that, I guess I was just noticing maybe the language to be more explicit about it. Because I also know like, on the teacher rubric, where it always says, and is able to model this practice.
Correct. As exemplar.
So I think, I think teachers would also love to see that part of the district goal is giving them the opportunities.
Yes.
To be models and to coach other teachers, new teachers or whoever. And I know occasionally you do that at the, like the summer workshops, you have teachers teaching, you have to, to start scaling that work so that parents aren't saying anymore, well, you know, we have pockets of excellence that, let's do away with that idea.
Yeah, we're going to have district of excellence.
District of excellence, that's right. Continuity.
That's right. That's right. And I'll tell you, the, just my transition in and, you know, from working with the administration and teachers and support staff, that's why, you know, with Billy Donigan coming in, in the, how well-received that was by this teaching staff, it's just amazing. So I think we're all, we're all in, in this together, and, and as I said, some of those questions that you have, I think as we go through the superintendent goals in my recording, I'll, I'll be able to, to show the evidence that this is going on in multiple ways, you know, through the peer-to-peer, you know, as that example, one example I gave, and then opportunities for some faculty meetings where, you know, part of that is the sharing out of best practice and what was shared out.
Sure. Well, I would sort of add on to what Dave said about exemplars, giving teachers exemplars. One of the culture changes that I'm seeing and hearing people talk about is getting out, outside the district to see what's going on in the classroom in a different community that, that bears in a positive way on what we could be doing. So that, that's, that's very exciting, and that's, that's a kind of shift in the culture, you know, both giving teachers permission to get out to look at some other things and meeting peers who are doing things differently in their classroom. It's very powerful.
Right. And that's, that's the support, providing them opportunities to see some of this stuff in action, so they can conceptualize on, wow, I know how to bring into my class that CLO works. Absolutely. And that's for everybody. That's even for principals and myself. I mean, having the superintendent induction program is, is very helpful, making connections, especially when we're looking at financing and things of that nature, so, yeah.
Do you want to vote on this first reading? Motion to approve Superintendent Gallagher's goals for 2018-19.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Ask you Madam.
Thank you.
Please second to that.
We're running out of topics or agenda items. The next agenda item is, is not so much a discussion, just a reminder that the school committee elects their vice chair annually, usually in January, first meeting in January. So I just wanted to put that on, on everybody's agenda.
I will not be here.
For first meeting in January?
I won't either.
Oh, all right. Maybe the second meeting in January then.
Does that leave us quorumless? Does that leave us quorumless?
No.
Okay.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't be able to vote now for somebody to take office at, at the beginning of January?
No, are there anyone who's interested in becoming the vice chair?
I would move that we elect Bruce Menon vice chair for next coming year.
Discussion. Yes, I would be happy to serve.
I want to see a sword fight with somebody, come on.
Yeah, no, it's been, it's, it really has been. It's, it's been a privilege to serve, and I've actually really enjoyed it. I've certainly enjoyed working with Sean. I've enjoyed working with school committee members, getting to know them. So I, I'm happy to serve.
Yeah, and I like the idea. I think the next two, three of us will be up for election, so I think whoever comes in, they should vote next time for vice chair. I'm for Bruce, continuing.
Did we vote?
Not yet. And just to add to that, when I approached Bruce a year ago and asked him if he would serve as vice chair of the school committee, he sort of looked at me and said, seriously? And, and then we started having a conversation about it and why it would be my recommendation and my choice to have Bruce. And I think he has proven in this year that he has done all of those things, you know, in terms of running efficient meetings, keeping our priorities, and working well with the superintendent, addressing the agenda, and advancing some of, I think, the issues that have been before us, for those of us who have been on the committee for a while, you know, that we just haven't quite gotten there yet, and, and really, I think, cognizant of some of those and working through those issues with the superintendent. So I am, certainly has made my life as chair of the school committee much more manageable with having someone like Mr. Menon and his level of commitment, passion, and competence in the role. And I fully have my support for serving in that capacity for another year.
Ready to vote?
Can I just, one caution, does this conflict at all with what the charter says?
No.
In terms of organizational meeting by the school committee?
Oh, early year to take effect on, so why don't we do it that way?
Okay.
In the first meeting of the January. So I think that that's probably a good point.
Yep.
All right. So motion to approve, we're modifying it just a little bit, Bruce Menon for vice chair of the school committee for the calendar year 2020.
2019.
2019. I said that backwards, sorry. To take effect at the first meeting in January 2019.
That's correct.
And don't ask me to repeat that again.
Second.
Second.
Well, that was, that was, there was a motion on the floor before that.
I know, but that had to be modified, too, because we didn't take into account.
Okay, shouldn't it be the?
I said, just add the date January to the original motion, if you, so.
No, I, I agree with, with the way you talked about it, I would just.
Okay.
I was concerned about the second motion.
Can we take the vote?
Oh, I know, should we have more discussion? Let's see.
Table.
No, 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 don't, don't.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think it should be a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, yeah.
All right.
Sorry.
Let's call him Brian first.
I know what to do now.
Mr. Reardon.
Mr. Reardon.
Mr. Reardon, I need your vote.
Bruce Menon.
Mr. Cole.
Bruce Menon.
Mr. Callahan.
Bruce Menon.
Mayor Holliday.
Bruce Menon.
Mr. DuCanto.
Bruce Menon.
And Mr. Hawkeison.
Bruce Menon.
And Mr. Menon.
Bruce Menon, and I would say I'm really thankful that my middle name didn't come up in, in this at all. Thank you very much.
Sounds like a raffle contest. For the record, can we have your middle name, please?
Marshall.
Marshall Mendy.
My mother's, my grandmother's maiden name is Michelle. That's where it comes from. I couldn't tell you where my brother's maiden name comes from. Actually, I can, but I won't. Superintendent Gallagher's Assistant Superintendent Mitch report.
Was that my wrong topic, brother?
All right. Thank you, Marshall Mendy. There's two. I'm just going to give you a very quick update on the schedule for the site visit of the targeted district review. It's going to happen, and it happens, it starts Monday, January 7th, so right after the New Year. And I'll just give you a little background so that you can understand how to read this schedule. We will have a visiting team of five members who will be coming for the district review. And they'll be here for three days, and they will kind of divide and conquer by breaking the schedule apart, and maybe two people will be doing one component of the visit while two others are doing another component. And so that's why you will see sometimes multiple things during one timeframe on the schedule. That's because they'll be, they'll be dividing them, the team, to do some of those things. The targeted areas are curriculum, curriculum and instruction, assessment, and student support services.
That's all.
So, so the foundation of our school district, and so they'll be conducting some interviews around that.
Business officer, breathing easy.
Yeah.
Right, right. We're not going to do that.
Nancy Lysek was doing a happy dance, I do have to tell you. And they're going to be doing some interviews around this. They're also going to do a lot of classroom visits. So one of the things they requested was every teacher's schedule for the three days they'll be here and maps of the schools, and then they determine where they're going to go in the schools. They'll visit all of the schools, they certainly won't see every classroom during that time. But in the times that you see classroom visits or review of documents, those would be slots that they'll be in the classroom. But they'll have two curriculum meetings, they'll have two assessment meetings, they'll have two student support meetings that are made up of different people in each of those sessions. They'll have a teacher-focused group for each level, they'll have a student-focused group, a parent-focused group, a school committee interview time. They have time with the superintendent, they have time with the assistant superintendent, they have time with the director of student services. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about your schedule. I have been going back and forth and back and forth for about four days over the schedule in trying to refine it and be able to provide them with the variety of people that they want and the spaces that they need and paperwork that needs to accompany it. But I think we're in pretty good shape. I talked to our liaison just at four o'clock this afternoon, and she felt like it was looking really good, and we were well on our way. You're welcome.
My question is, are the school committee interviews individual or group?
They'll be grouped. Right now, I have three confirmations, and two of you will be out of town, and then two that are maybes. So you can't have a quorum, so if there, if we end up with more than three, we'll run two sessions. So one will run at five, the other one will run at 5:15, just because the other half of the team doesn't end their session before until 5:15. So I just need to, you know, once, once you're able to confirm that, the other two members, then we'll either put that in or we won't. It just depends on what you decide.
Not that I'm getting forgetful, was I one of the people you confirmed?
You were.
Thank you for voting.
You were, yes. And I'll be sending a notice out to everybody who's confirmed. Once they approve the schedule, then I'll be getting in touch with everybody who's on the schedule and letting them know what their time is.
Thank you. Any questions? There won't be any math in the chamber, right?
They won't, pardon me?
Math, I'm listening. I don't have math, it sucks. Superintendent Gallagher's report.
Well, first, I just wanted to thank Assistant Superintendent Vick. So we had that meeting with the liaison, I think it was on Monday. Yeah, it was Monday of last week. And that meeting went on about an hour and a half, and really went through everything and what this visit's going to entail. And the liaison from the state said, oh, you know, why don't you get it to us after vacation? And, you know, after, and Angela, Assistant Superintendent Vick took the, she was going to a PD on Tuesday, but spent the entire day organizing that work. So our staff and everyone who's going to interview got time to know that it's coming. So she, you know, within 24 hours, sent the liaison from the state all the information, and I think they couldn't believe it. From, from our meeting on Monday to Tuesday, it was pretty much this visit was organized and done. So she spent the, the entire day doing that, so I appreciate that effort. That was awesome.
You're welcome.
All right. So I'm just going to quickly just summarize, just highlight the past couple of weeks. I had the opportunity to meet with Congressman Seth Moulton, Superintendent's Roundtable, as he's going into the new Congress. He's really looking at educational issues. I think it was our first discussion, I think, he left there with more questions after talking to superintendents, especially with the funding and the state mandates. You know, we're looking at healthcare costs, throughout all the districts on the North Shore was a big topic, social-emotional learning with no funding for that. So that was a big discussion, transportation and special education costs. And that's even before you look at like 21st century learning, the academic pieces, looking at school budgets. So he was very receptive. We also talked about. We also talked about school safety, um, talked about STEM and vocational initiatives. Um, but really, I think gave the congressman a lot to think about. And I think he's gonna come back, uh, to meet with the superintendent. So it was good to hear my colleagues were all kind of struggling with the same issues, especially when it comes to budget and these mandates that are being, uh, put upon the school districts. You know, the unfunded mandates, um, so to speak. Um, we also had a, uh, as, you know, as part of the Rotary Club, um, we had our students present, um, the interact club. Um, and I think I'm gonna bring them and recognize them at future school committee with all of the community service work that they're doing. Um, these students are the, kind of the leaders of seventy-eight students. And Logan Latamay, uh, really just had this idea of community service and this interact club. And a couple of years ago, there was, I think, less than twelve students and now it's eighty students. Um, and it, she's just an incredible, uh, incredible young lady that I'd really like to recognize them. And also the advisor, Jill Moran, who really organizes a lot of these community service events, so. And I think the Daily News is gonna be doing a nice story, uh, regarding that. Um, also, uh, Ed Garrity came in and worked with the middle school, grade six, seven and eight. They did a parent, um, uh, presentation that night that was well-received by the students, also well-received by the parents. Uh, and really we took a positive approach, uh, in working with the students, uh, those bystanders that, um, are really doing the right thing on a daily basis. And really, uh, increasing the, um, school culture there. His focus was on character, gratitude, leadership, attitude and really making a difference. And it was a great, great day for the knock. Um, and then the Home for Little Wanderers, we're still collaborating and discussions, um, looking at providing, uh, you know, more support for our students and, and counseling services. And that partnership is moving forward. Um, and that was, and once again, a very positive, um, aspect. And we're looking forward to really enhancing our, um, counseling service for our students and families outside of the district and making those connections. And working with Andy Egmont in the city, she, uh, has been, you know, wonderful working with our, uh, staff. And then last but not least, I have, uh, recognition by the college board, uh, AP district honor roll. So Newburyport High School was recognized, uh, for two, two pieces. Uh, our students scoring a three or above, which is really nice, but actually increasing AP enrollment overall. So not only are we scoring high, but we're increasing the enrollment. And I think under the leadership of Principal Wolf, we'll be seeing a lot more students challenging themselves uh, and taking those AP courses. So, um, it was been a, a great two weeks since we last met, a lot of wonderful work's going on throughout the district.
Did you want to mention the Mullen concert?
Oh, it's on the list, yes, the Mullen concert. Um, I had the opportunity, uh, grades four and five, uh, from the strings to the chorus. Um, it was, you know, a great event. I got to, once again, hang out with some of the parents, uh, and students. Um, very talented, uh, our music program and what Jamie Sukolowski does, uh, at the middle school, which then feeds into performing arts at the high school. So, um, it was just, uh, it was, it was wonderful. You know, I, I reflect that because my, you know, my children are a little bit older now, but I remember those days, you know? So sometimes I get, and I told parents this, especially at the breads when I go to the holiday concerts, if, if I tear up a little bit, it's fond memories that I'm not losing. So the superintendent gets emotional, maybe it's my age, but, um, it just, it's, it's what it's all about. Uh, seeing the kids perform and, and the teachers and the staff, uh, support was awesome.
Thank you, any questions with superintendent? Joinet hasn't met, subcommittee reports, finance meets tomorrow, rates.
Yep, tomorrow morning.
Uh, policy, superintendent evaluation, do I have a motion to adjourn?
That's one motion. Sorry.
Don't rush at once.
Sorry. Um, just the winter retreat, I know at one point we, we're gonna have it on the set, but now the mayor can't go, so are we gonna do that? Cause last time it ended up in August.
Right?
I know.
The winter one, the winter one ended up in August, now we're looking for a summer one to tag you. I have the meeting, we're not gonna be at either January meeting?
No, that's, uh, the meeting the twenty-second. Our meeting is the twenty-second, not the twenty-first, right? It's Tuesday.
And on K-Day is the twenty-first.
What?
Twenty-first is one of those K-Day.
Right, so our meeting would be the twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Which is Tuesday.
But you said you couldn't make that date because of the G D I R center.
No, that was Saturday morning, that was the twenty-first. Saturday morning, the fifteenth.
Just turn the twenty-second into a retreat?
Well, if the mayor's available. Everybody else available, would have been a readily scheduled meeting.
I thought that's the meeting I decided we're doing the calendar.
When is it?
The second meeting in, in January, did we just say that earlier?
Yes, we did.
Alright, so we could do the retreat then in the calendar, the first meeting in February?
Yes.
Does that make sense to do that? Cause I think we should, the retreat should take precedent over the calendar, I mean, precedent, but.
So it'll be the fourth for the calendar, February fourth?
Yes.
So, okay, retreat is what date? Twenty-second, Tuesday. Twenty-second?
What would the, the time be for that?
Are you the meeting?
Are you the meeting?
We might, if, if, you know, funnel in topics that you want to see covered, if you're interested. Um, to me, I'll, I'll work with both the mayor and the superintendent to set the agenda. And one more piece of that.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
The, was that February fourth and February twenty-second? Or January?
The retreat is January twenty-second, our next meeting after that would be February fourth, which is when we're gonna.
Do the calendar.
Do the calendar. All in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Who made the motion?
Everybody made it. Mayor can't move a shit in.
You want your.
And you, you could pick and choose who you want to second, cause they all seconded. Sean seconded it.
Who's who made it? I mean, I missed it.
I did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sean seconded, okay.
I think you're just trying to show how old I am.
No, they all talked at once, so.
Yeah, no, it was very, it was, it was a shame. Thank you.